June 22nd, 2023 Lander County Commissioners Meeting. Nice to be here in Austin and nice to see so many people here. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioner Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241-0153B2. So I'll call this meeting to order. Bert, would you leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. I did attend the Kishen Town Board meeting last Thursday. And they thank you for fogging, but unfortunately that doesn't seem to help the museums or the other bugs, but does help the mosquitoes. The sad part is on their extra well they were drilling for, they did not have any success at all. They went down and the further way went down. I guess the total was almost 500 feet, but it kept getting less with the pressures. So we'll have to tackle that one separately. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy.
I don't have any.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
More questions? Everything that I have on the agenda.
Okay. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for reviewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of June 22nd, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of April 27th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of May 10th, 2023 Special Agenda Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of May 25th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of June 8th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change requests. We do need to amend number one... Oh, sorry, number... yeah. One of the consent agenda, which is item number 21. It is... it says personnel. It should be personnel.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve on number two, the April 27th Meeting Minutes. And number six, approval of payroll change request.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, on your agenda notice then, you're just making the one correction?
Yes.
But everything else stays the same?
Yes.
Okay. I know that we approved the agenda notice for today, the amended one.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move into item one. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills, we need to pull checks 219-953 and check 220-039.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rest of the payroll...
Of the bills?
Payment of bills.
Okay.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve check number 219-953 and 220-039.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I have stand there made to my employer. Two, for discussion and possible action to reschedule or cancel July 27th, 2023 Commissioner meeting.
This is because you have no...
No DA, that's right, yeah. So are we good with that? Do we want to...
I'm sorry, what do we want to do?
Cancel.
Just cancel?
Yeah, because we won't... Or we could reschedule it. I mean, that's what we're debating here is like whether we just want to have one or...
We still have a meeting in July, so...
I can, if it's critical, I can attend by phone or something.
Yeah. What's the pleasure of the border?
I'm canceling it.
Okay. So we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we cancel 5th July, 27th meeting, 2023.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, three. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the donation of a plot at the Battle Mountain Cemetery to honor Deputy Stephen Priest, who served as a deputy for over 10 years with Lander County Sheriff's Department.
I will make the motion that we approve the payment for the plot for Deputy Stephen Smith or Stephen Priest.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. I'm going to jump items 19 and 20 of the agenda up. I think there's a lot of people here for those. So we'll open 19. For discussion and possible action to review, consider abandonment, application number 23-01, filed by A&amp;M Engineering on behalf of Lander County to abandon existing right-of-way in association with the Austin Realignment Project. Morning, nerds.
Good morning.
Steal a little desk space from me.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open number 20. Since we're kind of dealing with the same stuff here. For discussion and possible action to review, consider merger and re-subdivision map number 23-03, filed by A&amp;M Engineering on behalf of Lander County to divide approximately 316 acres into 312 parcels and accept approximately 67 acres for dedication of right-of-way in association with the Austin Realignment Project. So we have items 19 and 20 now open.
Good morning, everybody. Again, Aaron Martinez with AM Engineering for the record. And with me is my colleague, LT Stevenson. I told him it was going to be a long agenda, so I was letting him out there, pound some more rebar. So he's going to book his way in here. He's our professional land surveyor of the project. And so I'm going to keep it really brief because I do know you have a lot on your agenda. And I'll allow anyone to answer any question, ask any questions that you'd like, or I can elaborate any farther for those that might be not as comprised of the project. But globally, what we have in front of us today and kind of the point of the action from the commission is to accept this project, I wouldn't say from a tentative standpoint, but most certainly a very critical role of our project. One, we're asking for a vacation of right-of-way, which that vacation is essentially one of the tools in our tool chest to allow us to further work down the road of recording maps. And so we want to make it abundantly clear that Lander County is in favor of vacating the right-of-ways as we've shown on our proposed maps and willing to adopt our new map right-of-ways. And so through that, that is vacation of right-of-way is one of the processes to achieve that. There's another process though, and one of those is our merger re-subdivision approach, which is the second agenda item that's in front of you. And through that merger re-subdivision approach, we can also vacate and adopt right-of-way through that map process where Lander County is one of the signees on the maps. And so the old right-of-ways and new right-of-ways essentially become in one process. And with me is our legal team, Mr. Brian Hardy and Mr. Lance Earl. And as a team, we all are working and representing Lander County. And so the team feels that that merger re-subdivision approach is most certainly our primary workflow. And we're utilizing that as far as we can to obtain as many map recordations as we can achieve. From there, we might have a few unique situations where we utilize a parcel map in your vacation of right-of-way decision to do some parcels that are a little more unique and will need to be singular, singled out in order to achieve a proper recordation. And so I know that was quite a bit, but I wanted to explain exactly what's on the agenda and what we're asking for today. So with your acceptance, we'd be going to quite a bit of a permitting process. And the EP Bureau of Water Protection Patrol, yes, has to approve this project unfortunately. The way that we're doing our merger re-subdivision falls under a different NRS statute. And we're working with them through a streamlined process to achieve approval. From there, Division of Water Resources, NV Energy, and all our utility providers, US Forest Service, and the BLM. So we're actively doing quite a bit with all those in real time. So it's pretty exciting to navigate all these folks and it's actually going pretty well. We're a year and one month into this project. So we've already achieved a full map creation. And my team is out there right now pounding rebar to show every resident where we're proposing the boundary to be placed. That boundary is not solidified until you, as a resident, sign that map. Upon that signing, we record that map, then it becomes official. So nothing's official until you, as a resident, sign on the line. So that being said, the global aspect of this project is... There was a 1988, 1989 rendition of a Donovan map that was overlaid on the town of Austin. Due to that overlay created some cloud and title conflicts, which is what started this project. So with that, we've been asked, and other firms have been asked, how do we fix that? So what each resident has received up to this point in many town hall meetings is explaining the original Donovan map in relation to the proposed boundaries as we have seen. Obviously, we all know that Austin is very difficult to place a roadway as the Donovan map shows here. Nice east-to-west, north-to-south roads just doesn't work in this area. So of course, we had to put roads where it seemed to make sense with the topography. So that was probably one of the larger reasons as to why we are where we are today. And so our team has come through and surveyed all the existing infrastructure and is still obtaining more existing infrastructure as we go through here. And what we're trying to do is modify the maps in a way that's conducive to the roadway networks, your existing utility infrastructure. And from there, the residents themselves all have to work together in order to do a merger re-subdivision approach. And questions have come up, what if they don't participate? Well, it most certainly hinders their neighbor, for sure. We cannot modify a boundary without that adjoining agreeing to that modification. Okay? So with that, a very critical component is one of the larger landowners, Austin Resources. Mr. Robert Hughes is here with us today, has been a critical component to this project as a lot of their lands have been encroached upon, frankly. And due to that encroachment, we have provided Mr. Hughes a list of every parcel that we believe is encroached upon that. The project is asking as a proposal to him if he would be willing to relinquish the rights of those parcels to the people that have encroached upon his land. And I'm not speaking for the gentleman. He's here to talk to his own. And ultimately, again, until they all sign the maps, nothing's solidified. But I wanted to extend an appreciation to him on behalf of the project to working with us and being willing to do that for the residents of Austin. I think that he's not asking for any compensation that I've ever heard of, and he's just been very kind to relinquish some of the rights to those parcels that frankly have been built upon his land. And so with that, we've combined several parcels. And so one kind of unique thing that Lander County will consider is there's a lot of vacant land in the existing rights of ways. You're relinquishing the rights to that roadway network, obviously. And we're adopting a new set. But if there's any utilities that fell within that, our legal team is working out the proper language to reserve the rights to protect the existing utilities so that we can obviously maintain that infrastructure. But I think as a caveat, the county should realize that, you know, if there's a water line punching through an area that doesn't make sense, maybe the new plan would to maybe put the water line in your new right-of-way and start to focus infrastructure as outlined in the new plan. And I think that there's a lot of infrastructure that needs rebuilt in Austin. So I think this comes at a good time where you can get your right-of-ways fully solidified and then you can start focusing on utility and roadway infrastructure. So with that, again, I wanted to keep it extremely brief. But again, I'm an open book. We have a lot of components to this project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
First off, I'd like to thank Aaron and your team for all the work you've done and our legal team that we've had on this. This has been something that's been going on a long time. And you've definitely catapulted to finishing stages, which is exciting. So are there any questions from the boards? If not, any questions from our audience? This man.
Hi, Barbara. This is Sarah Lady Dory. I would like to ask Aaron, he had looked at Seventh Street, that it was given to me through abandonment between my two properties. And if I had that, I am not really having road into my property. Can I take that? So I'm wondering if Aaron had any time to research on that.
Yes, I have. And maybe after the meeting, I could meet with you and discuss that. We most certainly want to make sure, one, everyone has access. We're absolutely not cutting off any access. What the decision comes down to is ultimately, does Lander County want to maintain the roadway that you're asking to continue to maintain in their right-of-way? And we've developed the map and changed it as your request. And the next approach is for public works in the county to consider that road to also be included into their right-of-way.
Right, thank you.
We can talk more further after, absolutely.
Just a clarification. Is it a Lander County right-of-way? Is the road or is it someone else's property?
No, it's Lander County right-of-way. It's Seventh Street, down below the school, by that old...
From that high, from that high point down?
Yes. That is Seventh.
So can you access from the lower part?
I access... I don't guess because I don't go down the top part of Seventh. I come in up if there's no snow. Or if I'm in that little, low, median street that is someone else's private property.
And there is a few unique driveway approaches that Lander County will most likely be adopting as a right-of-way because there's no other real solution. The private owner was cut a road to get to their access, but a lot of it's outside of their property. And so it is a situation from past projects, if you will, or fire breaks frankly, that have kind of created this really unique roadway network that Lander County wants to consider. That the right-of-ways will be slimmed down. They're not the standard right-of-ways. And we're missing utilities. I'm sure there's utilities out there that we are unaware of that we find adopted.
Any other questions?
Ray Williams. I own property in map 22. I've sent you guys several emails on this thing. But the bottom line is they've never set any stakes for that particular map.
Sure.
And I know that I've talked to your surveyor when he was here with, doing the rope thing. But no, we went through this whole process. And most of the stakes that were set by Summit worked out pretty good because they know what the groundwork... They have never completed a survey of that either.
Sure.
And I know as things go along, you'll probably get to it, but haven't yet. Just want to let you guys know there's still some worms in the ground here sometimes.
Gotcha. Definitely don't know about any worms, but in terms of placing certain ones on the ground, right now we have...
What about maybe worms on top of the ground?
I definitely encourage, right, they're coming north down. So no, but to answer your question, we're actually out here currently staking the points as today. So we were out here last week, and the week before that, and the week before that, and the week before that. So we're most certainly out here actively staking points, but we're not in your exact area for sure. Right now, we're on Morris Road and working on the North Austin Fire Break. We have over 3,000 survey points monuments to place in the ground. Right now, those are going to be rebarred with feathers, and you're going to see them working through there. We're getting 50 to 80 points a day. So 3,000 points, 50 to 80 points a day. You know, we can do the math. And we're staring at somewhere between 70 and 167 stakeout days to complete that work. So there's definitely no misconceptions here. By the end of the summer, you will know where we're proposing that boundary to be placed. And then, LK, pull them in from the field. Good to see you, sir. The... those monuments, LK will come out and place his plans when that map gets recorded. So we'll have the monuments in place, but they will not be official until LK places his cap on that and we have a recorded map. We're going to start with map 1.0, 2.0, and 3.0 to start with. Then we're going to work our way from the exterior portions of the town and work our way in for recordation. So it's going to be one map at a time. Each individual parcel that's involved in that sheet will have to sign that sheet. So we've got notary republics that are going to be signing in California, Colorado, everywhere. So this recordation process is going to be unique. It's going to take time. The attorneys are going to be navigating that. They've got a healthy project on their shoulders to take this to that step. But is that back to your concern? Okay. We're going to get your block and you don't you worry. By the end of the summer, you'll know exactly where we're going.
Are there any other questions? Board? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion on number 19 that we actually abandon the application number 23-01, filed by AM Engineering to abandon the existing right-of-way in association with the Austin Realignment Project.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 20?
I'll make a motion that we approve the re-subdivision map number 23-03, filed by AM Engineering on behalf of Lander County to divide approximately 316 acres into 312 parcels and accept approximately 67 acres for dedication of right-of-way in association with the Austin Realignment Project.
Okay, so this was for the merger and re-subdivision?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into item four. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Wildlife Advisory Board. He currently sits and term expires on June 30th, 2023. New term will be from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. And our applicant is Larry J. Teskey.
I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Larry Teskey to serve on the Lander County Wildlife Advisory Board. And the term will expire on June 30th, 2023. So his new term will be July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our thank yous?
What's that, Patsy?
You said thank you to him for doing that.
Yes, thank you very much.
I was just thanking Larry.
Yeah. So it was nice to have volunteers. Number five, we're going to table that item. Six, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the locksmith permit for Byron Bane with McFob LLC and other matters properly related thereto.
Ron, are you going to speak on this? Since Ron is not here because we told Byron that he didn't have speaker.
We have done the background on this. As long as this goes along, so I believe we're... It's just up to you folks.
Okay, thanks, Ron. There's no questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We have approved the locksmith permit for Byron Bane with McFob LLC and other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into seven. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the continuation of renewing the six TV translator licenses for Austin, which will result in a fine per station if the licenses are renewed. So we discussed this a little bit last meeting and we thought it was best to actually have it here at the Austin meeting. So are there any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Just a quick clarification because in our paperwork, it said that if we didn't apply, it would expire on June 5th. And we talked about this. And we said that the attorney representing us actually had filed for an extension for us, but there's no backup and no information. So are we still okay with that, Liz? Should we consider?
Blake is holding for the record. So he didn't file an extension. He filed the applications. And then based on what happens here, he will read out the applications if we choose not to go forward.
Okay, so we still are open and we can make a decision either way?
Yes.
Okay. So one of my concerns, of course, is any time we shut off something in Austin, and especially this many translators. But we haven't had it for some time. So of those of you that are present, are there any that use this now and would like us to continue with these translators? I've only had a call from a couple people that were even using it before. And now, not only the expense, but we have a penalty of, what, $9,000 if we do renew this. So we want to think very carefully. I don't want to take anything away from Austin, but I know a lot of us have cell phones now and you get alerts on your cell phones for safety and information and flooding and things like that.
And just an oddball question. We sign up with different companies to provide our TV, and you pay a little bit extra for your local channels. What do you mean, local channels with ABC, CBS, NBC? I don't know if those still have... Do you weigh with this? Is that what you're... What's your question? Do you plan on renewing it?
Well, what happened was we had a gentleman that used to do all of it for us and file everything. And then we changed to another large company. And that... we updated all of our materials, our translators. It seems like we were updating everything all the time. And then they just kind of quit on us. And we changed county managers. And nobody thought to file. And the people that were filing years ago weren't there to file. And it just kind of dropped off the radar. We kept asking and asking and couldn't get any answers anywhere that anybody knew what was going on. So when we finally realized what had happened, we actually had to hire an attorney to find out what it would take to get us back on these local channels. So this is where we are. We can go back on the local channels for a penalty of $9,000 and keep our translators up. But who actually is doing that is what we're asking. How many would be serving in Austin to do that?
Who would be serving there? The bottom line is there's a license that's combined on this political list. Says the following stations are transmitted in these licenses.
Don't most people have? Like DirecTV or, or Hughes or some of the, don't most of them have, have that now? You don't need the local?
So you would still be able to get the local channels through your satellite provider, whoever, if you have DirecTV or Dish. This is just for someone that doesn't have a, is using an antenna.
I'm using an antenna now, so would it affect me?
Can you go ahead and, ma'am, can you state your name for the record? So we know who's asking?
I'm Teresa Dorr.
Okay, thank you, Teresa.
I, I just, I use an antenna. That's all I use. So that's how I get them. And does it affect me?
Are you receiving?
Well, that's why you were saying that, and that's why I was gonna ask, Ray, are you getting ABC, CBS, and NBC right currently? So I thought that service, what we're discussing here, has, hasn't been available to us, these translators?
Public service.
So they are, they're bringing it from?
So if we don't approve this, are they going to lose that? Is my question?
Right, right. They will, they will lose the, and you won't be able to get it with an antenna. You'll have to go with DirecTV or, or
I, that's why I want an antenna.
So we're asking, yeah, how many are antenna only?
I didn't want to take DirecTV. I didn't want to do that. That's why I bought my antenna. It's a long-distance antenna. And I can get, not all the time, but a lot of times I get up to fifteen channels.
So if we don't renew this, we aren't gonna get the channels?
Okay.
So for how many people are using an antenna is the key. And I know there's a couple out in recent river valley of that way on September twenty-two.
Like, can I have a question? The applications that, um, he just put in and renewed, did that reactivate it? Because wasn't it down?
Well, it was my understanding it was supposed to be turned off. Um, but I don't know if it got turned back on when they undated the.
So that would be the question. If it was off, was she still getting her service when it was off before we reactivated it?
But, uh, if we don't renew it, then we, we have to turn it off, take down the equipment. We can't use it at all.
So it's probably safe to assume based on testimony that they're still providing service? Otherwise, they wouldn't have those channels.
That's what I'm thinking. That they never turned it off?
But if we do away with this, they'll probably turn it off.
Well, they will turn it off, yeah.
Yeah. So how many people in here actually use the antenna?
Most of them do.
Well, if Teresa's the only one that's present today, and we know there's a couple more that makes.
It's supposed to go up to three to four hundred miles.
So that might, yeah, that might be why she's getting it because they may deactivate it because she has a long-distance one. That might be why she's still getting it.
Yes, and I, I have it aimed at Reno.
Yes, 'cause I was told that, um,
And with bad weather, I don't get it sometimes.
That there wasn't any service in this area, 'cause I'm on the TV board in, in Battle Mountain. And I was trying to figure out where the, all your guys' equipment was here. And nobody knew, um, where it was because it was outdated. So I'm wondering, you must be bouncing off of Reno. Yeah, so I don't think that your, your equipment has been updated enough to be utilizing this anyway. So I think she's receiving it probably from Reno. But I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure and don't wanna step out of line, but that's what I was under, from Bart. Um, Negro had said that this equipment hadn't been, um, updated or upgraded and no, didn't know where it was. So I'm wondering, but I don't wanna be wrong and then do something and then turn your, turn your, you know, TV.
Is it updated when I get better channels?
Um, probably not, I don't know.
Ray?
So long story short, it used to be managed by a local committee called the Austin Television. And it was kind of a public service brand and a group got together and said, "We wanna put this in." And it started from there, but it continued on through the years, eventually fell back on Lander County. When the T, the TV board was formed in Battle Mountain, there was a lot of discussions that the board at that time said, "We wanna be independent." A lot of people said, "Well, just have one tax and do the whole thing," which would probably be the right way to go, but it didn't happen. The other repeaters are right out here, but then you guys are probably getting to the repeaters.
Have they been updated?
You'd like to take them up there if they're down there for a real drive.
They have been updated a great deal. Um, I don't think anything's been done in the last three years. But prior to that, it was like over twenty-five thousand dollars that we were spending, um, for our updates and such. So, um, we're, we're out of, because we're out of compliance, because we didn't file for the license in time, uh, there's been no updates on any of that. But I don't know whether we need more updates or not, but, um, I know the, the ones that, uh, that we got the complaints about, they said we couldn't get anything any longer. Aren't receiving anything at all. So Teresa seems to be the only one that's receiving anything, and, and hopefully if we don't go on, that might not affect you, hopefully.
Because when Battle Mountain was down, when we had bad storms, we had, lost it. But they, um, the people there were getting, getting it bouncing off Eureka's. So they were still able to get the channels when Battle Mountains went totally down. So I would imagine that you're probably getting it off of Reno, um, repeater.
We had a question out there?
Brandon, for the record. So is this a free to our community, correct? Once you guys pay the in-rain state your contract, it's free to our community?
Well, it's free in the sense that we're spending taxpayers' dollars to pay that ninth old dollar fine.
So for a TV and satellite and all that, that costs quite a bit of money, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and so we live in an elderly community of more than fifty percent, and they're on a fixed income. Wouldn't it be beneficial for them to have the option to just have their TV?
Absolutely, but if they're able to get it off the repeater from Reno, it's not gonna make any difference. That's what I'm asking. And I don't know that for sure, Manda, but if they're able to get it off the Reno, um, repeater, it's not gonna make any difference if we do ours, 'cause they're not gonna get any more channels off.
But even for our emergency broadcasting?
Off the emergency? I don't, yeah. It's, that's not gonna make any difference off the emergency broadcasting, whether it's gonna be from Reno or, because I'm thinking you, they said you guys' came off of Eureka's, so.
I think before we make any changes on this, we should probably get that as a, you know, confirmed understanding whether they will, we can still utilize it from Reno or from Eureka or anything like that.
I guess what we'd have to find out is if, 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 if they're, that that service is actually off currently.
Michelle, um, had someone go unplug it or turn it off or whatever at the tower when we realized we didn't have licensing anymore. And so I don't know if someone can attest that if your channel went down when that happened, did they? It would've been a couple months back.
Did you plug it back in?
I'm guessing it did when they undated them.
So we've, we've never plugged them back in, and, and the repeater that you guys are getting is out of, uh, its bounds?
Oh, so.
Repeater that, that they're hitting, um, off of New Pass. The, the one that we had here was at the water tower and up high Morris Road. And they were dilapidated. They were working with Eagle Communications to upgrade them because the service wasn't coming in. So anybody that was getting service previously had the extended range or, um, had clear weather to operate off of some of these others. Either they were getting Eureka's or out of, most of the community here in Austin is getting out of Churchill County. Um, and Eagle Communication is still maintaining them powers. So I don't think that anybody that has it right now is gonna change any from what it currently is, 'cause it's been unplugged for.
About three, four months at least. And that was my understanding when we did have licensing, the channels weren't working anyways, so I, but I don't know.
Well, the, the thing we're considering, of course, is right now the extra nine thousand of the penalties, but it doesn't stop there. We still have to hire people to do all this, so we're still talking, you know, a lot of money, tens of thousands of dollars to continue this. If, if most people do have their, their cell phones now because the alerts come on the cell phones. So even the PSAs and things like that, the people can get. So it isn't like we've left, left you totally in the dark. And if there's only, uh, you know, a handful of people, it's like, this is really difficult. We don't wanna take it away, but it doesn't make a lot of sense financially either.
And if it's unplugged right now, it's not even working?
If it's, yeah.
That's my point.
Yeah, if it's unplugged and she's, they're still able to get television, then if it's coming off of Fallon, like Bert said, then, um, yeah, it won't let make.
Just one, one final, one, in the past, we used to give a lot of grants that paid a lot of these fees. I don't know if anybody's inputed into that. See if they're still available.
We looked into it.
Through the FCC.
A number of years ago, about five years ago, I know we looked into them. We were not eligible.
Well, I know, everything kinda changed.
That's true.
Things smoked under the carpet.
But most of it isn't the upgrade with all of the internet. That's where they're going.
Okay. There are no more questions. Is there a motion? No motion?
I'd like to see if there, is there any way, um, what the crunch time is, is if we can find out from Eagle Communication as far as the difference between where they're getting their reception now versus if we were to, um, hook this back up, what the difference it's gonna make for the community. Is there, are they gonna be gaining something? And so is that a possibility that we can have, find that out? 'Cause I don't wanna just go in the dark and assume. I would like somebody to say this, this is, this is how it is. It's black and white this way, and it's not gonna make any difference. We're not leaving them out or something. Is that possible?
So, yeah, anything's possible, but, um, the, uh, a couple of concerns that I'd like to point out is one is we couldn't get any maintenance on these in the past because nobody wants to come out here and, and upgrade them. So that's one of the concerns that, that's out there that maybe we still wouldn't be able to get anybody to come here to do some of it. And the upgrades are gonna be far more expensive than just to renew it. Um, I think that, that a great idea that I got shop maker is that, you know, maybe we offer some wifi or something. You know, we have, uh, you know, other options here in the community that we could offer that would be far cheaper than the nine thousand and then the additional. Um, you know, just for one of the buildings up here, I think we had about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of, um, quoted work to be done. So this, this becomes pretty expensive for a service that we can probably provide with, with another option to any members of the community that, you know, with a wifi box or other things that would give them the same service if not better service.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
You're good.
Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sarah, the owner of the Cozy Mountain Hotel. Um, Sky Fiber has coverage of most of the town right now. I'm sure they would make a great deal of you for community-wide, kind of low-speed wifi, wifi coverage. Also with this, uh, I think what all we need is a plan for an emergency broadcast system, right? Because this might cut somebody off from that. I think there's a lot of other options there. I mean, if there's what, five people left with that cell phone in this town, it would be cheaper just to, for the county to provide them the cell phone and to pay this piece of reason. I mean, seriously, like if you do the math, you could just give them a county's cell phone. Problem solved. I do think there needs to be an emergency plan. Um, just my property insurance alone on the Cozy Mountain Hotel, they tried to up it from two thousand to eight thousand dollars a couple of years ago because of fires. Then we had that fire down at the Forest Service, which was contained because of volunteers that busted their butts. But that could have potentially been a community-wide evacuation. Do we have a plan to get all the seniors out that don't even drive? What are we gonna do? Go door to door? I don't know. There probably is a plan I'm just not aware of. But, I mean, in, uh, in the Midwest where they have tornadoes, they just install sirens. You could literally install two sirens in Austin and everybody would hear it. So there's a lot of things you need to do for emergency broadcasts besides pay twenty-five thousand dollars and nine thousand dollars to upgrade for some local TV channels that we don't know how many people are using.
I'd ask that question last meeting to Mr. Quick, because that was my concern. That was my main concern, was the safety and broadcast system. And I forgot what he told me, 'cause he said that we, if we didn't elect to renew this, that we would still be okay.
Absolutely. Through our nine-one-one system, uh, we have reverse nine-one-one, and there's more to it than that. But we can send out, uh, voice and text messages over your cell phone for, uh, emergency.
And what about landlines, Ron?
Uh, it's the same thing.
It goes on landlines as well.
And then, and then obvi, and then on, with emergency broadcast, I mean, you're still gonna pick it up off Fallon repeaters, uh, Eureka repeaters, possibly Reno repeaters, correct?
Possibly, yes. Keep in mind, I'm not telling you that's wrong.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, I know, yeah.
I do know where we are in the country.
Yes.
I wanna try and find out how many landlines are in the town. I don't think there are very many.
Yeah, so it would, I know that it goes regardless, a landline or cell, the reverse nine-one-one, um, will send out messages.
Cheaper for a cell phone than a landline.
Pardon me?
It's cheaper for a cell.
Oh, yes, I know. So I'm saying, either one, if you have either one, the reverse nine-one-one from the sheriff's department will go out to either one. So.
Okay, so I'll ask the question again. Is there a motion? Okay, no motion.
Well, hold on a second. I'm trying to get this all straightened out. Can, can we do a repeater or not a repeater? I mean, like a wifi here? I think Sky Fiber is already here. So you can get more TV off of Sky Fiber you can't off of the Hughes Net or whatever.
So we, we do need some direction because we do have this application in. If we don't have any direction, then that application will proceed forward and, and then we're gonna be responsible for, um, not only the maintenance, but then.
The fees.
Yeah, the fees, the fees, and then, um, my staff and myself will be responsible for maintaining this. Where in the past, we were doing that through a third-party contractor who didn't renew these. That's how we ended up in this situation.
And honestly, I think the emergency broadcast system, it could be as simple as what this lady said, is you put a siren up. People hear it, they know to contact their sheriff's department and say, "Hey, what is the emergency?" You know, it's, uh.
Yeah, well, it comes out over the radio, you know? So not everybody has our TV on when they emergency broadcast anyway. I, I just.
Right, exactly.
I'll make a motion that we disapprove the continuation of renewal of the six TV translator license for Austin, which will result in a fine station if the, per station if the license, license are renewed.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Um, I didn't even hear the motion. Is it to approve or disapprove?
Disapprove.
Disapprove? Thank you. Gotta speak up for me. Thank you.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Okay, guys, we're gonna move into item eight. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh one and ordinance for the dissolution of the Lander County Economic Development Authority, known as LIDA, and its board members and repealing Lander County Code, LCC twenty-point oh seven, together with the time and place for hearing on the dissolution and providing for other matters related thereto. So we've had quite a bit of discussion on this. Um, and Commissioner Chop had asked for it to be, uh, for Kathy, once she got back. He thought that was only right, and the consensus of the board was to agree with that, so we're hearing this item again. So are there, is there any further discussion, any, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
For the record, I would just like to know how you guys enjoy the view of our town, even? Was it beautiful?
Yes, it's nice.
Oh, it was, okay. But the building that's still sitting there, I think the economic development for our town is more important as a small instead of as a big. And I think, you know, um, the rural development authority will do a lot for bringing in big businesses. But I think that it is important for our community to be able to be involved with how our town looks.
Okay.
And I think the economic development board is very important for that.
Okay, thank you.
I do know, um, Commissioner Chop and, and I both have had some concerns over this because we, we are losing our local input and, and our volunteers have worked hard on it. Um, and I know we're with NNRDA, the, uh, you know, the Northern Regional, uh, which handles everything. But, um, the point is they're still at Alco and it still seems to be Highway eighty. And, um, even then, I, I like the input from the volunteers, and this is one, one advisory group that at least just had some of the same volunteers and some very good volunteers for many years. So, um, we have just expressed our concerns on that. Of course, um, it passed. I mean, for us to delete it, and that's why the resolution is on here. Um, but, uh, we didn't, we didn't have Kathy, and Kathy was a key point because she, she sits on it as part of the commission for her appointment. So, um, with that, I guess I'm saying, gee, but we still don't have a full board and Mike isn't here. So I, I would like to see us defer it until we've got a full board.
Well, Mike made, made his point very clear at the last meeting.
So I just want to reiterate, this is the item for the ordinance to move forward. This board has already approved to abolish the LIDA board. So if you wanna go back to discuss the abolishment of the LIDA board, then we should probably table this and put that item back.
Now, we've already boarded on.
This is just for the ordinance.
We're not going back, 'cause we've already deleted it as a board.
Their board voted to, to dissolve themselves. So it was their board who, and I did not vote on that, 'cause I can't vote on that. So it was their board themselves who voted to do that before it came to the current issues. So, um, and that, there was input, um, for, at the meeting, um, from Sheldon and, for NNRDA and then at the county commission meeting. So my thinking was, um, their board wanted to. And so I don't know how to go, how to think beyond that when they're, they're the ones who voted on that.
Because it was done, I, kind of at the last minute, I guess that's why. And there wasn't enough time for real communication and input. And so when it was brought up, "Let's just dissolve this," it was kind of ordered on to dissolve, and I, um, I, I questioned that too. But then it comes to us, and it came to us, and we acknowledge that, and I understand that. And we still had concerns, but like I said, I understand it's the ordinance. But if the ordinance doesn't pass, then we've gotta go back to square one. So if you wanna go back to square one to begin with, um, I'm. So if you want to go back to square one to begin with, um, I'm okay. We could try it again.
Well, I'm not okay because we've already put a lot of discussion and work into this. We've already had our staff communicate. NNRDA says that we can handle it just fine. Again, it's, it's making, taking something that I believe is more complex, more complicated and streamlining it and making it simple. And I think it's going to be better when we do that. Again, and, and, and that's been my position from day one, so.
And just my, my thinking on it was this group, the ones who, the ones who voted on that have sat on that board for, um, quite some time. And so I don't, that's where my confusion comes, is they said they've sat on that board for quite some time. And, um, so, and then after, like I said, I know that Sheldon's not from Battle Mountain and I understand, um, uh, they have done a lot of work and have sat on that board for, uh, the people who have sat on that board for a long time have put a lot of work in there. But that's where my confusion is. If they wanted to dissolve themselves, how do you change that? Man, I don't understand the part I don't understand. It's over.
I would like to add a permission to go over the minutes of that meeting, when it was approached and how it was agendaed.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I do have one comment. Um, just for the community of Austin, I'd like you guys to know that that has nothing to do with the building that has collapsed. So the reason that building is still down there and collapsed is the insurance. Um, we're going through the process of trying to get reimbursement, let the insurance go through that. So we cannot go clean that up until they give us the green light to do so. Um, having this board would not change that one bit. Just as a point of clarification.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no more questions, I'll hear a motion. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh-one and ordinance for the dissolution of the Lander County Economic Development Authority, LIDA, and its board members and repealing Lander County Code, LCC two-point oh-seven, together with the time and place for hearing on the dissolution and providing for other matters related thereto. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Doesn't have to read the whole ordinance in.
Um, no, this is an ordinance. You just have to read the title.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. We'll go to item nine. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove a memorandum of understanding between the OE three and Lander County temporarily modifying Article seven-point-two and seven-point-three of the current collective bargaining unit agreement between Lander County, the Lander County Sheriff and Lander County Sheriff's Association and other matters related thereto.
Do we have a meeting here? Come on up. I believe this is just to piggyback off of the one that they already, um, we put in the six months and they are still in need of it. So they're just asking for a continuation for the six months.
It's just an extension of a previous MOU to allow them to flex the, the emergency dispatchers.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ron?
Do you have a copy of it?
Good. All right, any questions? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the memorandum of understanding between OE three and Lander County temporarily modifying Article seven-point-two and seven-point-three of the current collective bargaining unit agreement between Lander County and the Lander County Sheriff and Lander County Sheriff's Association.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number ten, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove a memorandum of understanding between OE three and Lander County temporarily modifying Articles seven-point-two and seven-point-three of the current collective bargaining unit agreement between Lander County, the Lander County Sheriff and Lander County Law Enforcement Employees Association and other matters properly related thereto.
And this is just the other contract.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the memorandum of understanding between OE three and Lander County temporarily modifying Articles seven-point-two and seven-point-three of the current collective bargaining unit agreement between Lander County, the Lander County Sheriff and Lander County Law Enforcement Employees Association.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. It passes. So we'll move into item eleven, update from Public Works Director Don Frantz with current and upcoming projects related to Lander County.
Morning, Don.
Good morning, how are you this? Um, sure, pop the glasses. Okay, this year we've been working on the Austin Airport water system, doing some upgrades there. We've worked on the way out and putting the tank can and stuff, um, a little filter in the, in the water faucet. Uh, we've got approved for that. That'll probably happen later on this fall. The airport sign out there on the road, the roadway leading into the airport, um, the road, road and bridge is pretty busy. We're working on the roads right now. So it's said it's probably after July sometime that it'll be able to get to that. It's got all the materials set waiting, so. We've got a project for the booster system here in town. It'll probably be late fall, if not, uh, maybe over the winter time we replace it. The tennis court last year that we, we, uh, rebuilt the tennis court last year, we had, it looks, apparently it's got some salt on it or something. This ball of the surface of it, so we're working on getting that patched up and recode and repaint it. Um, and we're going to re-strike it. Uh, we've got the electric, we need to work on getting some lights up there for the basketball court and stuff still. And then the, the reader sign, I just talked to, what's his name, Gordon, or Lori or something, Riesko. He's got the sign and everything already. We'll, we'll be cutting a hole in all this, uh, and getting the electric ran. But he says it'll be mid-July, after the fourth, that he'll be able to do that. I think that's about all I have to venture.
Um, on the, the tennis court, we need a quick resurfacing. Is that what we have to wait for?
We're going to patch it and then repaint it, get a good coating over top of it.
And do we have a timeframe or we can?
I just ordered the, the material yesterday. I, I missed it. Otherwise it would have been here today. But so it'll be next week and hopefully we'll get some.
So it'll be soon.
Yes, hopefully, we'll see. Hopefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Is getting that way to, um, a path to where we're playing or where the board, um, level?
No, no, it shouldn't, that we all, this sounds.
The other thing we were looking at was, um, uh, you're working with Endot to extend our sidewalk?
Yes, we haven't heard from Endot on that yet.
I'm sorry.
And we put that out to Endot and we, I, I don't believe we've heard anything from them yet. So that was on the right, on the roadway on that side of the road. I'll, I'll get back there on that and we're working with, written, I believe.
You could buckle a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah.
After the extension, okay.
Because there is a, they're offering grants and stuff and that is a perfect opportunity on that one, so it's a slow process at the state.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the tennis court, does that qualify the contractor? For the surface to be like this right now? Because there's gouges and everything all over that.
I believe it's salt got on it.
Huh?
I believe salt got on it. There's been several others look at it and it looks just like somebody threw salt on it or maybe come out one of the sander trucks since it is close to the road, so.
I don't think so.
I, I, you know, I can't remember.
What is covered over the way through? Is that?
With the snow.
Skating, right?
The water was on to the side, so.
I think the contractor ought to come back and fix it.
I'll have them look at it.
Over that mess. It's nasty. I don't see how you could repair that, fix it where you aren't going to kill yourself if you ever fell down on that.
It's, it's pretty rough. That's how we can patch it.
It is nasty.
And then you can recut, recode it. But it does look like salt. That's, I've done personally my own house, you know, prior to it, so.
They can't, they can't play pickleball right there.
That's why we're trying to get it fixed.
The bottom line is, the homeboy is down there.
Yes, that's why we're trying to hurry this through, so get it back on the players.
Don, have you had the contractor look at it?
Yes.
And who was the contractor on the job?
Honeywell, Honeywell did it. Um, and I haven't had a look at it. I, you know, I've looked at it.
Okay.
Like I said, I've, I've solved this contract personally myself.
As I have.
To get it better, so.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Um, we'll move into item twelve. Update from the Rec Center Manager Sean Baker with current and upcoming projects and events relating to Lander County.
Sean Baker for the record, um, currently for the pool in Austin, we're still looking for lifeguards. We have one application. Uh, we had two, but a gal took another job, uh, closer to home. Uh, so if anyone knows, anyone that wants to put in an application to be lifeguard at the pools, we can pick them up here at the courthouse. Uh, going from there, also with the pool, we just installed new pool lights and we are redoing, uh, the pool deck. Um, we should have the material in a week or so. Well, and back to pickleball, we have all the outdoor equipment for pickleball, but after we get the tennis court fixed, it'll be out so we can use that. Um, then going into Battle Mountain, the fitness court next week will be getting installed. That'll take three days. So if you guys are out and about, you should see that. Um, Fourth of July, all the Palmer and, uh, poles are put in, parts, everything should be good for all the vendors that we have coming in. Um, now I'm going to move into an update from our library manager. Still bear with me, Austin update. In the last month, we've had a steady flow of patrons. There have been thirty-seven patrons visiting the library day over day. We have had an enormous amount of feedback from patrons expressing how welcoming the space and staff are. Between Rebecca and Lori, story time will be starting in the fall, if not sooner. Rebecca is busy working on getting the supplies and books needed for the Austin to be successful in this endeavor. There have been, been many large amount of connections made within the community and I'm pleased to say that the library is functioning like we all had hoped, planned for it to be. So, um, I don't know if you guys have seen the Austin library, but if, after this meeting, if you guys could go in there, we have a new library. Her name's Lori. Maybe introduce yourselves, say hi, check it out. Can't do with that. So, any questions?
Um, the hours again, Tuesday through Thursday?
Yeah, right now. Uh, if we can take a look at that, if we need to reset, um, that's something I will have to Rebecca with, making sure. Is that what you're thinking, Nancy?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the bell, fire bell from, uh, Red Center?
That? I don't know.
What, which, what was it?
The bell off of the Red Center.
Where's it at?
Oh, it's up here, I believe, with the road bridge shop. Yep, it will be incorporated into our new building. That's later on the agenda, but.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute break. Uh, there's snacks right here to the right in this room over here, guys. All right, guys, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Want to let those guys know in there? Bill?
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, guys, so we'll continue on with our agenda here with, uh, item thirteen. Uh, discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the fiscal year twenty-three FAA grant application for the rehabi- re, for the rehabilitate apron and taxiway B and expand apron project at the Austin Airport uh, for an FAA funding amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and a Lander County match of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents and authorize the county manager to sign.
Good morning, Commission. David Meyer with JCP for the record. Uh, we talked about this project in, uh, a number of commission meetings over the last year. Uh, we opened bids for this project. Last month, we actually received three bids, um, and they were pretty good. Um, our low bid was less than our engineer's estimate, which is not happening anywhere right now. So we just have some good contractors in the area. So this, uh, this grant application is to seek funding through the FAA's notice of funding opportunity for AIP discretionary funds, uh, and it has to be based on our amounts. So we're, we have contracts, uh, ready to go. We've completed negotiations on our end. We've done the bid openings. All of these are our numbers and working with Lincoln, this is all budgeted. So we're just looking for the final approval of the grant application and get it submitted ahead of the July fourteenth deadline.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year twenty-three FAA grant application for the rehabilitate apron and taxiway B and expand apron project at the Austin Airport for an FFA funding amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and a Lander County match of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents and authorize the county manager this way.
I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we're going to table fourteen. And just a reminder, uh, for anybody that is going to speak, please come to the front and speak as clearly and loudly as you can because we're trying to reach this, uh, microphone here to record, so I was asked to let you all know that, so.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, David.
Uh, so fifteen, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between Lander County and Gail Uter for privately owned hangar on county airport property in Austin, Nevada.
So, Commission, uh, we may want to revisit item fifteen, sixteen, and I believe seventeen because after briefly speaking with, uh, with Mr. Williams, we want to duplicate the contract that we have in Battle Mountain, but with, uh, um, pictures and the descriptions of the buildings that we have here in Austin. Um, I believe there was a slightly different lease amount. The airport board here in Austin couldn't vote on it because a couple of the members of the board also are hangar owners, so they can't vote on everything. Uh, and so there's a couple of things we would like to clean up and maybe Mr. Williams can speak to some of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's much simpler form than it was through that, but.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, with, yeah, with that, like I said, we, we did, uh, ask for a different amount. Um, but there's also under the, if we use a different contract, that's fine because on this one, um, they refer to Battle Mountain again instead of Austin. So we have to, uh, change that too, depending on which contract they use. So, um, for example, it says, "County also agrees to compensate leasing for disassembling, reassembling, and moving expenses if the county, for its convenience, requires that the leasing be moved to another location within the Battle Mountain Airport." So we need to double check on, not try to.
There's some other changes along with the description. It's, there's a very big description of the properties, of these proposed places which could go with the new boards, which is much better than what we had before.
Okay. All right, so as a rest of board, are we okay with tabling? Yeah, uh, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, we'll table them for future items. Okay, so we're going to table fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And we'll.
I'll come back with corrections. I'll get them.
Yeah. All right, eighteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the agreement between Lander County and LP Insurance Services LLC for group insurance broker and advisory services. Okay, do we have any questions on this item?
Tim is here if you guys have questions.
What's that?
Tim is here if you have some questions.
So I don't have the contract from last year. Has anything been changed?
No.
Well, I mean, last year, we did a three-year contract last time, right?
Yeah, I think.
Was it three years last time, Tim? Or two? I didn't remember.
I, it was a thirty-six month with the only, I haven't been changing the contract for the dates for new thirty-six month terms with the same thirty-day out clause.
And the amount?
Did not change.
Did not change.
You've got a ninety-day out.
Ninety-day out?
That's what I have on.
Okay, ninety-day, right, written. Thank you.
That was one of the things I was going to bring up. Instead of a thirty, this has a ninety. Up to you guys.
Which, I mean, if we're, if we're counseling insurance, we probably need ninety days.
Yeah, we really need ninety on insurance.
Yes.
And frequently do, so.
There are insurance, haven't we? No.
I don't huddle about, about a ninety day because frequently there are things that are more complicated.
Okay. If there's no question, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between Lander County and LP Insurance Services LLC for group insurance broker and advisory services.
One second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, twenty-one, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the human resource director to authorize signature on a retainer fee agreement for an investigation on personnel matter at a rate of three-twenty-five to three-fifty an hour referred to by pool pack. Any questions? Any questions?
Yeah, how, how can we authorize something? We have no idea what's going on.
Because it's a personnel matter. We always pay for the investigator, so Pool PAC has hired counsel. Counsel wants an investigator, and how we always pay through the investigator.
Does it? I guess I'm curious why it has to come before us if it's just personnel?
Well, I think...
Because I don't have authorization to sign it.
She doesn't have the authority.
I didn't agree with it.
The county manager doesn't?
Well, I, I asked that question, and he, there's a potential conflict of interest there, is what I was told.
Okay, so this is unusual?
Yes.
Okay, because it isn't usually come before us, it's usually handled in-house. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no question, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the human resource director to authorize signature on a retainer fee agreement for an investigation on a personnel matter at a rate of three twenty-five to three fifty an hour referred by Pool PAC.
And it's on a personnel matter?
Personnel.
Yeah. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carrie's motion, or item twenty-two, for discussion of possible action regarding the Austin Community Center and Austin Clinic projects and how we would like to proceed on the plan for the grant funding we were awarded.
So, Commission, I believe that Mr. Martinez downstairs is still discussing the Austin Town boundary realignment, um, but in your backup, there should be a map there of kind of a proposed plan, and, uh, the idea would be for the community is, uh, where the horseshoe pits are currently at, up at the Austin Park, to, um, put the combined, um, community center, library, kinda, kinda wrap that all into one in that area where there's enough parking and, uh, and access to the park all at once. Uh, we would relocate the, the horseshoe pits and, uh, you know, I don't know if you guys can see the building, and maybe we can, maybe we can hold that up for anybody in the community that'd like to see that. There would also include the Austin Clinic there as well.
Anybody, you guys can come and grab this if you wanna look at it.
There's a public tacky thing here, too.
Yeah, they can take this, too, if they want that around.
I think both of them have a sleeve, but just flesh it all the way up to the park, just kind of come to the up top around. It'd be funny to have a community center, it should be, having the work and using year round.
Okay.
We have, uh, and, and the other thing, your, your, your map shows that you'd be blocking your road that comes off of the hill by the water tanks.
I don't think so.
Well, I don't know, it shows just a few parking there, so it's gonna have a leaning place or whatever, you're gonna have more parking.
Yeah, but that's, that's just a parking line, so people will be able to drag through there. That's not, that's not a wall.
Does the grant come from the historical preservation that we view, we use to spend in there?
No, the grant is not a historical, uh, preservation grant. It's a, it's separate funding, um, but we have nowhere else in the community. If we go back to the, the original community center down here, there's no parking, the, uh, I believe Champy now owns the property alongside of that, and, uh, at this time, he doesn't, doesn't wanna sell it. We originally, I think, uh, Commissioner Waits had wanted us to try to purchase that and then create parking and, um, restore that to kind of what it used to be, a fire hall, um, but we don't have that anymore, so we're not, I mean, we're open for anywhere of the community would like to put us. We would like ideas. If you have a place you think is good, we're open.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, um, just for clarification, the Austin Clinic is over here, and Commission and Tourism owns that, so if you're gonna do something different, you can name it something else, because right now we have the Nevada Health Centers in there, and it is labeled the Austin Clinic. Do you guys just own the building, or are you... We own the building and we're active with it. And then we have, we just signed the lease in Nevada Health Centers, uh, for another year.
Thank you. Did you have a question, ma'am? Come to the front, please. Thank you, Ron.
Just really quick, if Champy owns that parking lot, could you use eminent domain to take it and give him the value of it?
I don't know. I don't know that this commission has ever been big on big government taking over other people's property based off of something like that, however...
I, I agree that it can be misused, but for a community building, for a parking lot that he's not using, throwing it out there.
Oh, you were asking, like, eminent domain, take his property?
Paying the value of it, yeah. But, yeah, that's, that's just my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This one, actually, the old building is, is not on the agenda, but just to clarify that, um, we're looking at that totally different to have it rebuilt with perhaps a facade or something like that, but not as a community, since we got the additional funding, um, that we can do the medical clinic also. They're looking at the whole total picture of one big one, since we lost, yes, that's why. But it still will be, um, put back, even though we cannot use it, it will be nice to look at when you go through town.
So, there will be money to fix it up?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna fix it, yeah, and that's been on the agenda a couple times, so that's been our attention so far. But like I said, because we have the additional funding for both projects, we kind of are looking at one building for everything.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Richard, Mr. Treddy, how, how big an area you're gonna need? Because that part over there is just narrow strip, you're gonna have three, three different entities in there, or you're gonna have enough room for it?
And that's why we're proposing to do it up here.
Right, that's what I'm wondering. You'd have more room up there.
Oh, there's no way we could do it here, no.
Oh, okay, 'cause that's what it sounds like here.
It would just be a community room, like, like we were doing before, but like I said, with additional funding came in for the, the balance with the clinic, and then we decided that we could also put the library there.
Right, you could put all three entities.
So, that, that's why we're in a...
Okay.
A, a new area. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
And so, just so the communities, where the reason we're trying to combine all these into one, we can't find staffing for anything right now, so if we can have one staff member that can open a library, have the kids in there playing pool, doing a bunch of things, we can kind of keep these, these things open all in one location. We figured the park's probably the best place to try to do that, or even the people passing through can stop, take their dog down to the dog park, go up there, you know, maybe kids can play pool, they can swim maybe in the summer if we have staff to cover that pool. So, that's kind of the thought process behind this, so if anybody has ideas, we're open.
Yeah, but there's no parking up there. You have a birthday party now with ten people, you can park. So, I believe, I don't know, who owns the hill pass where you throw up the fire ready? But whoever owns that, maybe you could take that out, put park from there. Otherwise, there's no parking.
Yeah, the only parking we have, we, we've kind of, I believe, Mr. Martinez has displayed on the map there, it is limited parking, but it's better than what we have on Main Street.
Exactly.
Maybe one last comment. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be feasible to just buy out the convention and tourism over here and take this whole area right across the street? You could probably acquire that one property from Mr. Treddy's and make it one big deal right downtown here. There, there's a lot of land right over here, a lot of parking.
Yeah.
And, and it's downtown. They can park along the street if they have to walk, otherwise you'd need a bus to get people up there to, to do something up there. I, I don't know, or it just seems...
That's a thought.
Yeah, we're pitching, we're open for any ideas.
Well, I, I don't know, we could work out a deal, but then the clinic would still be in the same place, but, but in a different building, I agree with your advantage of the process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Aaron Martinez for the record. So, just to comment on the parking, what we're gonna think about...
Aaron, can you come to the front? They're just making sure we get everybody on the recording, so, sorry.
We're trying to maybe build the building into the hillside a little bit and expand that Nevada Street, so that we can utilize Nevada Street as some off-street parking, and then that hill is so big that we're looking at building kind of a, a retaining wall, if you will, as part of the structure to support that side, and then that pushes the building into the hillside, which allows us to occupy Nevada Street a little more. So, you're right, parking is limited, but the county's got a little bit of a plan to handle at least the occupancy of the building, but maybe not address the parking issue for the, the whole pool. That's a whole different situation.
The sun is shady side of the hill, like last winter, that snow covered over there, nobody uses the pool, so nobody needed even, they didn't even have a boat for a couple of months. But I mean, it gets a lot of snow in there and a lot of drift.
Okay.
Now, we have the highway department, which is...
Thank you, Ray. Commissioners, any discussion or questions?
Well, just like Bert said, I mean, if we're, we're open to ideas to, you know, at least look at that to see if that's feasible.
Yeah, maybe Paul I could speak to if they would be willing to do something like that.
I can't do that. You'd have to put it on the agenda for them to, to discuss, but...
Yeah, did, did you see our plans for that?
No, I'm sorry, I just got here. I apologize. I was progressing, and you didn't get your time. This is the youth center?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay. And did you get the lots from Champy?
Uh-huh.
No? So, you're gonna open it out onto his lots?
No, that is actually up here at the park.
Oh, up here at the park?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where the horseshoe pits are currently.
Okay. Well, I noticed that that's my apartment. If they take that hill up, you drive past, go on up to the fire, they, they got parking, and this work, whoever gets back here, everyone told me that I don't know how he owns that, so if I don't know how he owns that, it would be a problem.
Good idea. We just need the, the budget to address some of those offsite concerns, whereas your grant funds are extremely constrained with the square footage of the building that we're trying to obtain. Right now, we're really tight on, on budget for the, for the grant itself, so that's how the commission needs to be aware, with this offsite stuff, and so it's still...
Hey, Aaron, she had a question on the inside of the plant, the building of all the offices.
What are we gonna do with all these offices? But that's just... I don't want to sound whatever, but you go.
Hey, guys, if we're gonna have discussion, can I have one person at a time and have you come to the front, because we can't hear it in the recording?
Okay, sorry.
And it's important that we have it recorded, so...
Okay.
So, please come forward.
Okay. Uh, Dee Helming for the record. So, what are we gonna do with all these offices? I mean, I, I love the plan, we get the expansion, we have room to do something, but we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven offices. What are you gonna do with the rest of them? The youth center, I get, having the commercial kitchen and all that is amazing, but we gonna have a lot of empty space just sitting there, or...
So, the floor plan is extremely flexible, to answer your question, and the direction that the county is looking at right now is a dual occupancy facility, and so when we're talking about a community senic, center, youth center, and clinical operations, what we were kind of thinking of is a professional office space for the clinical side, so that we can still meet building code requirements for that occupancy, but not explode Lander County's budget, we're trying to do some sort of true medical facility with high-grade equipment that's just gonna kill our budget. So, the idea was a clinical office, but at the same time, Lander County could potentially utilize those offices for other items, so that was kind of the dual purpose there, and then in terms of that layout, it's completely flexible. We could nuke half the offices, you could have the whole community side an open room, so just note that it's a canvas that can be painted upon, and this was just step one to get your grant further. And so, uh, don't worry, it's not gonna be exactly like that. We've been playing around with one reception, does two, how much storage do you need, what types of storages do you need for the types of usages that you have. So, some of those offices might turn into closets, so that's just something you need to consider. This is just a, a canvas that can be grown upon. I think the county manager is shooting for ideas and community input, so this is your opportunity to maybe outline some of those needs that you have to make this a more multipurpose facility that is worth the investment.
Okay, so the RR Hall, number twenty-three, that's the area for the, oh, restroom hall?
Yeah, we like restaurants to be isolated, so when you come out of a restroom, we don't look at everybody in the room like I, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a layout thing, so that's a hallway.
So, you're gonna set the youth center stuff up in the meeting room?
So, the youth center and meeting room are just, um, there's a library off in the corner right now, with a great room, as we're calling a meeting room, it can be really whatever you'd like there, so...
So, I would rather, personally, as a youth board member, would rather see the youth center kind of off back out of the way, so that if you have a lot of people in there and, and you have a group meeting or something, you can close it off, so we don't lose games and pool balls and, and all that kind of stuff. It, it should be set so that you could, you know, if you don't have somebody there to supervise it, you need some, you need to be able to close it off so that things don't disappear, because if you have really cool games, they will disappear.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if, if I'm understanding this right, that, that if we decide on this building, this location, um, to put the grant funds towards it, then we will have the input continuously to actually do the inside that includes all of it, right? Because, um, I, I'm with you, I mean, I, I, this is not set in stone with the meeting rooms and what we need, but if we decide on today, this is where we're going forward, then we'll have several meetings over what we're gonna do and how we're gonna put it and where it's gonna go, and that's where the input is so critical.
Right, and then what are we gonna do with the, the mess downtown? Are we just gonna leave that an empty lot?
No, that is, uh, we're waiting on the insurance once again, and we have, we believe, we're really close to the final to clear that out. First, they were waiting on snow, then they heard there was a fire in the building, and so they had to investigate that there was, that there wasn't.
Yeah.
It sure wasn't, we all know that.
Yeah.
Um, but they had to come out and make sure that that was good, so we're getting really close to being able to clean that up, and once that's cleaned up and we know what we're gonna receive back in insurance funds, then we'll start to design to build something down there that's gonna be more of a, um, pull the old fire truck in, people can walk by, it'll look really pretty, like the old, um, facade when it was a fire hall back in, in its day.
Well, you leave it there long enough, there won't be any wood left. As you can see, it disappears every night, so...
Well, we're hoping to be able to clean it up, because it does, it's, it's an eyesore, but it's not something that, that we've had control over getting done, or else we've been down there cleaning it up.
Okay, good, yeah. So, I thought at, at one point in time, we had talked about putting the library down there, because it's more centrally located right on Main Street?
We did, and then, uh, part of the concern is staffing, so the reason why we're trying to use a multi-purpose facility, so we can hire one staff member that, then we can keep the youth center open around the clock, we could, you know, have the library open around the clock, we could do that and actually give more boost out of the building.
Not around the clock, but seven days a week or whatever, yeah.
So, that's, that's kind of the idea behind putting it up there, and if you know anybody that wants to go to work with the pool, anybody here, we need somebody so we can open the pool this year.
Well, like I said, the person I know can't swim, so... Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for the moment.
Thank you, Dee.
Uh-huh.
So, are there any other questions? Okay, how would the commission like to proceed?
I think if, if me and Mr. Martinez have the direction to put it, if that's the location the community would like and is okay with, um, then we can continue to come back to multiple meetings and, and refine the, the design on, uh, you know, because there's gonna be some further investigation of sewer lateral connection, water connection, some, some other things that we have to look into that we don't wanna waste our time and funds on having, having Mr. Martinez do, if, if that's not gonna be the final location.
Okay. Is it, is it something that we want to further discussion with, with our tourism convention to see if they possibly want to do something with us on that section of lines, or no?
That's, that's entirely a different one.
What do you guys think?
Well, we don't need to accept, I mean, the grant is ours, right? So I mean, we don't have to decide today what we're doing with it. We're not on any timeframe, are we?
Well, we are kind of on a timeframe to some degree. Not a very strict one, but we are on a timeframe. They're gonna wanna start seeing some final design and basic layout.
Yeah, well, I know for the final in the building, but I'm saying if we continue with our meetings on this, maybe even a special one in Austin when we find out what we can do with it and figure it out. We'll put it on the agenda again and highlight just the inside of the building perhaps and what we'd like to do. And then we can always weigh it back to Austin, to Austin for a special meeting and get their input.
Yeah, we should give the direction, and then we can get with Dee and everybody up here and fit their needs the best. You know, we've been working with Nevada Health Centers. We kind of have an idea of what some of their ideas are, but we haven't designed this down to the point where we've all sat down on the same ground together to see what is most feasible, because we haven't got the general direction there. It changes everything depending on location.
Okay.
We just have to submit the, we do want to submit the application for the grant by June 30th. So that's why we kind of wanted to know if you guys wanted the all-in-one, no games or separated, because our grant writer has to have that direction.
Can I ask one more question? This grant that you wrote, was it supposed to be specifically for the site where the building is now, or was it flexible? Is that something you need to look into?
It's flexible.
Okay.
It is flexible, and the reason, another reason, just so the communities aware, why we want to combine these is because when you start erecting your load-bearing walls, clearly, the more you put up, the more the cost is. So if we separate these out, one grant is for like $800,000, one's for $600,000. If we combine, then we get more bang for our buck, because we're only building, you know, so many load-bearing walls and buildings where if we separate them out to two different sites, they'll minimize the effectiveness of them funds.
Right, so now we're gonna have two empty buildings, because we're gonna build a building down on Main Street, and then we'll have a clinic open, or empty, I mean. So where, I know that Convention and Tourism owns the clinic, so they need to come up with a plan to do something with that, so it doesn't sit there empty.
I don't think that's going to sit empty, because I think they're still gonna have their rural health entire... Am I correct in that, Paula? That you're still gonna...
I don't know, didn't they just talk about the Nevada Health Centers?
Which is rural health.
Well, that I know, but that was, I don't, I didn't hear that.
So the plan would be Nevada Health Centers would be moved up to our...
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
This board approves every year a grant to fund Nevada Health Centers, which in turn pays for the rental of the building across the street. It's a revolving door of our own money, so it would save us that money on the grant.
Okay.
Paula to move the record, but...
You're on, Paula, when you come to the front, please, Paula.
Just so you know, I did speak with Stacy Giomi, and he said he wasn't aware of any moving or talks with the county. He is perfectly happy where they're at. So if there's some other thing that you know of, you know, I guess let us know, because the person who does all the contracts doesn't have any clue that that's what the plan is.
Well, we're not talking anything immediate. I mean, this takes a couple of years to do.
Right.
So it's the first time down.
But I think they're just nervous about what you're doing, whether... Because if you bring another clinic or practitioner in, then they will not be able to sustain the clinic.
No, I know, I understand all of that, and we have already discussed a meeting coming up with them, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, we've already had multiple meetings with them, but...
That's entirely different, yeah.
Okay, yeah, may I ask who you're talking to?
Stacy, and she was well aware of what's happening there.
Stacy is a man. Stacy Giomi is a man?
Nope, it's a lady, and we've had multiple conversations with them, and Nevada Health Centers is very aware. They're actually due the grant through us, so...
Well, I, I'm sorry, but I actually know Stacy Giomi, and I have worked the contracts for the last 10 years with them. And he is a man, and he's... And so I don't know, maybe you're talking to the clinician in Elko. She does the, she actually comes to the clinic and schedules things and stuff, so maybe you're talking to her. But like I said, Stacy Giomi is the one who does all of them with Walter.
But see, we wouldn't be doing that for some time.
Okay, well, like I said, he wasn't aware of anything, so they're a little bit nervous of whether Nevada Health Centers will stay there.
I understand what you're saying, but you have a year's contract with them right now. This is the first time that it's even come on our board. So it isn't that we're gonna be calling everybody around until we make some decisions of what we're doing.
Right, right.
And then they will be...
Well, like I said, that's just, he hadn't heard anything about it, and we weren't aware of anything, because like I said, we've had the contract with them, I think way before Convention and Tourism even bought the land. I think the clinic has always been in there, so that's just what they were concerned about, and on our part. It's the same thing, you know? Okay, thank you.
So I just want to make the board well aware that Nevada Health Centers did reach directly out to me, because they did hear from Paula. They thought they were getting kicked out of the building, that the county was bringing in our own doctor to do our own thing up here. I said absolutely not. I want the community of Austin to be aware of this as well. We want to leverage our partnership with Nevada Health Centers and our clinic in Battle Mountain and try to make better services up here in Austin, Kingston, everywhere in the northern, southern half of Lander County. So there's never been any of that. This is solely on a building. The contract will be revisited at that point, and they will have the choice, as will this commission, when they budget for the grant, whether they would like to stay in that building, come over to the other building. But these are talks that are way out, and I don't feel that it's appropriate to leave that down the road, that this community would be without health services, when that's completely untrue. We want to make that stronger and better for this community. And we've had multiple Zoom calls with them. They are fully aware of what we're up to at this point. They know that they're gonna be looped in. They're gonna have a say in what we do in the building. And they're actually excited about working with us, and no matter what direction we go in this, because it can be beneficial.
Well, my question would be, where'd they get that idea? Because all the conversations that we've had on the public record have been our willingness to continue to work with them and not to take them out or anything, so where would they even get the idea that we wanted to get rid of them?
That came directly, I believe, is what I was told directly from Paula. But I want to make sure that the community of Austin knows that that is not anywhere in our, in our idea is to work anything like that. And if we can work something out across the street, we're good with that, too. But we want the most bang for our buck for the facility we're building, and we want to try to bring this nurse practitioner that we're gonna hopefully hire here in the near future and have them leverage Nevada Health Centers to where we can work together and provide, have a provider up here, even in the winter months when they can't make it from Elko to here. So there's no disconnect between us and Nevada Health Centers. We've been communicating, and it's going well.
That is not true. I did not tell them that. They had heard from the clinician here, that they'd been speaking with the clinician, and your ambulance service had been speaking with Bert, and they're the ones that had said something and alerted Stacy Giomi to that fact. So for us, it doesn't matter if the clinic isn't in there. We will rent it to someone else, or we'll renovate it and do something completely different. So, I mean, we're not worried about that. It's just our concern has always been that the community of Austin is serviced with the healthcare that they want. And so we've continued to do that lease, because it is what Austin had wanted. And so if there's anything different that Austin wants, you know, we're certainly open to that. And like I said, the board would have to entertain the idea of having like a commission meeting with both of us to talk about that. And like I said, I could get the agenda done, but that is not the understanding, because we're just as happy with them in there. It was the thought of the other clinic in Austin, and you bring in a whole new clinic here is what upset everyone. It wasn't clear, that wasn't stated. It's clear that you were interested in taking Nevada Health Centers with you instead of creating another clinic, and that's when they got upset, that they had never heard anything about it. And like I said, Stacy had had multiple conversations with him before the lease was signed. But this has, you know, really nothing to do with what the essential item is, but just a record, I'll state that.
Thank you.
So there's time. Is there really anything that we can do, other than like table this, till we have more information?
Well, just to give them direction, because like I said, like Patty said, it's not this. It's not gonna happen overnight. This is a long process, so...
Well, no, we can't put the cart before the horse. This is the beginning.
Right.
I mean, so then everyone will cooperate and work it through the next step.
We want something that's going to work, that's gonna benefit Austin and make things better. That's, I think that's the intent of this board, so how that looks, I can't answer, but that is our intent, so...
So we just give direction to move forward, to figure out which is the best for the community?
Okay, so just to be clear, so in this, in our request, in our grant, we're gonna be putting this all in one building?
Yeah, well, I think for the simple fact that the personnel issue that you spoke of, and then just the cost per square footage, it makes sense only to do it that way, so...
And then we can come back and revisit when it's appropriate, put an agenda item to approach Convention and Tourism and potentially... But we'll make that a separate agenda item, and then the community of Austin can speak on that as well.
You got, good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, perfect. So you've got your direction. We'll move into item 23. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove resolution number 2023-05 to levy the 2023-24 tax rates and other matters related to there, too.
Blake Sullivan for the record. Juicy's not here. She was gonna try to be on the phone, but this is just her annual box of her little stuff she has to get done.
We need to read this into the record?
If you do have questions, I do believe she is on here. I just have to figure out where she had. But this is just her normal stuff, so...
Yeah.
Okay, I made a motion under Resolution 2023-05. It's of the Board of Lander County Commissioners, a resolution by the Lander County Commissioner, State of Nevada, to levy the ad valorem property tax rate required for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, in accordance with NRS 361.460. Whereas NRS 361.460 states, "Immediately after the Nevada Tax Commission shall certify the combined tax rate, the Board of County Commissioners shall by resolution proceed to levy the tax rate required for the fiscal year beginning the succeeding July 1st, 2023, designating the number of cents of each $100 of property levy for each fund." Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lander County now that the combined tax rate, pending certification by the Nevada Tax Commission for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. General Fund, 1.2670. Road and Bridge, 0.1909. Indigent, 0.0755. Ag Extension, 0.0150. Aging Services, 0.0850. Airport, 0.0400. Culture and Recreation, 0.0895. Youth Services, 0.0009. State Indigent, I want you to go to Nico, 0.0150. State Medical Indigency, 0.0655. Capital Acquisition, 0.0300. Lander County Landfill, 0.0500. Hospitals, 0.5109. School, 0.7500. State Rate, 0.1700. And the base is 3.3552. The Specials, Austin Town, .2213. Austin Water, .0542. Austin Sewer, .0135. Battle Mountain Town, .0500. Kingston Town, .3048. Passed and adopted this 22nd day of June, 2022.
Thank you, Patty. We have a motion.
Can you change that to 23, and she's going to fix the resolution?
I'm sorry.
23.
Change that to 23.
Oh, and I read 22 also. Thank you. Passed and adopted this 22nd day of June, 2023.
Thank you. And we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, I think we're gonna break for lunch at this point, guys. They've cooked up a lot of meals over at the senior centers, so it'd be great if everybody would go over there and eat. And we'll be back at 1:15. All right, guys, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. So we'll continue on with item 24. For discussion and possible action, actually, excuse me, it's, yes, 24. For discussion and possible action regarding letter on one-year delinquent taxes per NRS 361.5648 and NRS 361.565. So it looks like just the list of delinquished, delinquent taxes. What, why is the university paying their taxes? And they own five, they own several parcels in Lander County. That's interesting.
Right here in Austin, pretty much.
Do you think?
The only question I get is on the letter from our treasurer. The one that says issuance of affidavit, the legal advertisement. And I just, I needed a clarification on the notices. This is 18, and then it has some parentheses, 19, notices.
I think that was just a typo.
Well, Mike, oh, I see.
So I just wanted the clarification on the letter, but otherwise...
Hey, Tasha, is Juicy there with you? And if she is, can you guys unmute yourself?
Yeah, Juicy, can we hear you?
I can. Patty has questions. Did you guys hear her question?
Um...
No. Can you have Margaret ask a question, if we can hear her back?
Okay, what do you need, Patty?
There's a typo on the letter that Juicy did. It says 18, but in print sees 19 notices.
On the letter, there's a typo. It says 18, but in parentheses, it says 19.
On the letter, just a clarification.
On the letter, she just needs a clarification. It's 19.
It's 19.
19 for the typo. All right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Motion?
Okay, I am, I'm moved, we acknowledge the Lander County Treasurer's personal affidavit to the Board of County Commissioners, affirming that due notice has been mailed with respect to each parcel of 19 notices.
There, we have a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. 25, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove payment to Lander County Treasurer for payment of taxes held for 23 to 24. Anybody have any questions on it? Motion?
I make a motion to approve payments to Lander County Treasurer in the amount of $14,305.74
Also good.
For taxes collected in advance from specific taxpayers for the 2023 and 24 tax year.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. 26. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove adjustments to rule. Any questions? I'll hear a motion.
I will make the motion for the action to approve the adjusted tax rule.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Seven.
Second, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
27. For discussion and possible action to acknowledge the list of refunds per NRS 354.240 made by the Lander County Treasurer from July 1st, 2022 through June 22nd, 2023. Anybody have any questions? Motion?
I do have just a clarification, because on our financial statements that we get, that we approve, you know, at all our meetings, very once in a while, there'll be a refund in there that she refunds on taxes. So why is this different? This is...
Can you hear that, Juicy?
No.
On the financials, once in a while, there's a refund, so she wants to know what's the difference with this and that. Every once in a while, it'll show a refund?
She's talking about on the check register.
On the check register, sorry.
I think if I'm not mistaken, that's for individual property owners' taxes. I think this here, we're talking about the actual assessed funds, right? Is what this is, what I see here on the backup.
Well, some we actually credit. We don't send back. So if they request it, I imagine we would send it back, but I wondered where we're putting this in what place.
And they're both, one's out of Texas and one's out of Nevada.
Juicy, can you hear us?
No, we can't hear you very well.
Okay, can you hear Lakin? Juicy?
So I think Patty's question is why are we doing a refund when we typically give a credit?
No, we don't always give a credit. Once in a while, we should.
Refunds that Laura asked me to because they didn't already have to. So we refund them.
So the refund because Laura.
Want to know my better extension? Didn't get a write-off for their taxes that they already paid the taxes. So we refund them back.
So they might've had an abatement or something and they didn't, it wasn't applied before they paid their taxes. I think is what she's saying.
So that's the difference between this and versus what we do on the check register? That makes sense Patty?
I think so. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's how we do it, but I know, it's like some of these have been sold. So of course we're going to refund, but I just didn't know why it came to us. So. Okay, well then I make a motion to acknowledge the list of refunds per NRS 354.240 made by our Land County Treasurer from July 1st, 2022 through June 22nd, 2023.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. 28. Land County Treasurer, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the transfer of delinquent water slash sewer accounts to the 2022-23 secured tax rule as reconciled on June 22nd, 2023. A, to transfer the reconciled amounts according to Land County Code Section 13.04.050, Section 7, Section E, Battle Mountain. B, to transfer the reconciled accounts according to Land County Code Section 13.08.050, Water, Austin Water and Sewer. Any questions? Motion? So do we need to motion, one motion for A and then another motion for B? How do we want to do that?
Yes, correct. They're two different ones. So yes, you have to.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of delinquent water sewer accounts to the 2022-23 secured tax rule as reconciled on June 22nd, 2023. A, to transfer the reconciled accounts according to Land County Code Section 13-04-050.
That's it? That's one motion? So we have a motion on A. Is there a second?
All second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then motion for B?
To transfer the reconciled accounts according to the Land County Code Section 13-08-050, Austin Water and Sewer.
We need to put the amounts in there. So, oh yeah, it's right here. So.
On 13,000.
No, that was on, it's right here. Actually, J R Senior Pack, she gave you. So it's $3,330.66 on B.
Okay, 13,000.
No, it's right here.
I move to approve the payment in the amount not to exceed $3,330.66 reconciled on June 22nd, 2023 to the Austin Water and Sewer for delinquent accounts 90 days or older per Land County Code Section 13-08-050.
All second.
Is that, okay, was that, actually, that was, is that the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion, second?
I second.
Okay. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to amend the motion on A since we didn't put the amount in there?
Yeah, I guess we probably should. Just quickly amend the amount.
Okay, I'll amend the amount to $66,592.76.
And this is on A. Okay, so those are a second to that?
All second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, perfect. 29. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove payment for delinquent water and sewer accounts for 2022-23 and reconcile on June 22nd, 2023. A, to pay accounts according to Land County Code Section 13.04.5, Section 7, Section E, Battle Mountain. B, to pay accounts according to Land County Code Section 13.08.050, Austin Water and Sewer. Any discussion questions? Motion?
Are there any amounts in there? Like we had a.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Am I not seeing it? Oh, okay.
Tell me I want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Battle Mountain Water and Sewer in the amount not to exceed $66,592.76 reconciled on June 22nd, 2023 for the Battle Mountain Water and Sewer delinquent accounts 90 days or older per Land County Code Section 13.04.050.7E.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on B?
Make a motion to approve the payment in the amount not to exceed $3,330.66 reconciled on June 22nd, 2023. Austin Water and Sewer for delinquent accounts 90 days or older per Land County Code Section 13.08.050.
Do we have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move into correspondence reports, future agenda items. So we've got all the ones that we.
All ones be tabled by.
Tabled, yeah, we'll put those back.
I'll have an update on your employee survey on that one. We'll talk about that.
Can you come to the agenda about if they want to do a later one, please?
Yep, we can.
Is anything? Okay. I'll move into public comments for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment?
So do you just let me know that she would like to open up the museum to anybody that'd be interested to go tour and see what some of you guys' grant funding goes to here in the community? If you guys would like to do something else, like come up and I'll just open it up.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, no public comments. I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any motion, second?
I can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Safe travels. Back to the big city.